Good evening, today is the Executive Board meeting, July 27th, the time is 6:14 PM. I'm gonna call the meeting to order once again, 6:14 PM, July 27th. Trustee Muse?
Pilot.
Trustee Tyson is absent. Trustee Mitchell said that she would be running delayed, so she's absent right now. Trustee Webster?
Yeah.
Trustee McFadden?
Here.
And trustee Smith?
Here.
Also present is village clerk, Juanita Darden. Village President slash Mayor, Bishop Joe Roberts. Corporation Council, Vasselli.
Here.
Melanie from Robinson Engineering. Mr. John Thompson, Economic Development. Fire liaison, people came, call the foresters. Pio Butler.
Here.
Uh, the late, um, Quandra Craig, Mayor's Assistant. Police Chief. Yeah, with my last words. I'm sorry, keep money, and keep money at T. Also on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance, I'm so sorry you all.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, of the God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, can you set up, lead us into a prayer, please?
You know, our heads. When we follow the name of Jesus, we come to you, hungry as we know how, Lord. Ask you for the touch of our hearts, minds, spirits, and souls, Lord, so that we can do your work. Move forward with this beautiful village, this little Lord. Yes, if you can touch us, so that we can find peace and brotherly love. Jesus, let me pray.
Next on the agenda is approval of the bills, for July 27, 2023.
Trustee Smith make the motion to pass the bill.
I'll say.
Motion by trustee Smith, second by trustee Webster. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Minus the Phillips' call service, yes.
Trustee Tyson, trustee Mitchell, and trustee Muse.
Yes, minus the ninety dollars for the safety training.
It's gonna be yes or no. If we can extract those two things and vote on everything else that we want, we can do that, per suturely, so maybe address those two things individually, if that's okay.
If you see, it's only idea, uh, just to let you guys know, the ninety dollars that I did take for free.
Okay.
See, the ninety dollars was, uh, for testing the equipment.
Okay. So either we can go with the sixty thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-one cent, or we can, uh, minus, but I, I, I'm gonna go for the full amount.
So.
So right now, we have two absent, two yea, and two, um, no, minus those two, you.
You need three, right, you need three total votes. We need four total votes to get the bill passed. So what we can do is, there's two bills up for dispute. Can we make a motion with the board, be liable to making a motion for all bills, except for the ninety dollars and Phillips' auto, which no one seemed to have.
Before, before, before anything, you know, because when you got people to do the work, they don't spend their money, they don't like, cut their time in here, you know, it's.
So I'll just make the motion.
I'm understanding.
I, I'll just make the motion, uh, to pass the bills, listen, we can either say yea or nay, for sixty thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-one cent.
So that was your motion already?
Yes.
It was second.
It was second by trustee, so you. So you made a motion by Janita Smith, second by Webster, for sixty thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-one cent. We had two yea, two absent, and two with minus the bills.
I'm gonna make the motion, sir.
I'll make, I'll make, I'll vote yes to pay the bills. Um, but we need to do better, how we do our bills, we need to do better.
So we still have enough to pay the bills.
Okay. Mayor can vote.
Mayor, we have three, three yes, two absent, and one, uh, removed. Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, go to yes to pay the bills. Next on the agenda, we have approval of hiring three part-time officers in the June executive session. Okay, we're gonna move approval of hiring three part-time officers in the executive session. Uh, we can do it minutes together, December 8, 26, and 22, and we can do it separately, it's up to the board, you know.
We can go together.
We can go together.
So mayor's looking for a motion.
Yeah, just for a little bit. Yeah, like twenty minutes.
December 8, Ju- January 26, and June 27, looking for a motion.
Looking for a motion.
Trustee Smith, I make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Smith, second by trustee Muse, trustee Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson, trustee Mitchell, trustee Webster?
Yes.
And trustee McFadden?
Yes.
I'll finish business, we have nothing. We're looking for approval to pass Dixmoor Public Library District, used to parking lot on April 23rd, and going to an event.
Trustee Smith, I make the motion.
We need five.
It's a good one.
We need the five. Approval of the.
The number five.
Department commentary, you have to do that later, because department commentary is supposed to be done at committee, and they went on, sorry about this, sorry. We will come back and let you speak, sorry to overlook that. Okay?
That's fine.
So approval Dixmoor Public Library District?
Trustee Smith make the motion.
Motion by trustee Smith?
I'll say.
Second by trustee Webster?
Before discussion. Discussion probably is always, bro.
I told him.
You know, just before you think y'all's going on like that, finish by, please, please, please check with the village clerk.
It's somebody else's.
I don't feel, who done it? They need to check with the village first, because you could have been having something over here, or you could have been getting a light, a lock, strike, or anything.
That's true.
So just check with the village, but I know, I know you did call me a couple times, uh, so.
And I emailed her, too. I emailed her.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yep.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson? And trustee Mitchell is absent.
Yes!
He can't say yes, he knows, he cannot say yes on the recording, he cannot, he cannot speak on the recording. So just let him know he needs to give it, because we had the whole mail to come in. Tyson, you have to be here in person, please. Next, approval cleanup September 9, 2023.
Trustee Smith, I make the motion.
Motion by trustee Smith?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Muse, trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
And trustee Mitchell and trustee Tyson is absent. Approval of the IML conference, September 21st to the 23rd, I guess we need to speak to the Treasury to see.
We can approve it, but not, uh, we can both approve it, but you know, far as spending the night and all that stuff. I don't see that.
Oh, we are just, well, we don't have.
You got time to do the way to the next meeting, we can table to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Is it only?
This is on the general, but not for an amount.
Not an amount, so we can wait.
So we can wait.
You approve, don't we?
So we'll table to the next meeting?
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Looking for a motion, to go to that, Bill.
Trustee Smith, I make the motion.
I'll say.
Second by trustee Webster, trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell and trustee Tyson is absent. Approval of fitness and fun, Dixmoor Community Center, uh, we're gonna promote that off, trustees for them, alright.
Who's for what?
Fitness, uh, we're gonna approve what just had the date, if you want to talk about the other stuff later.
The, the cost, well, yeah, we need to figure out how we're gonna, you know, go about, so.
Can we move that?
The, the date.
We're gonna prove the August 9, 2023 date, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Looking for a motion.
We just approved by.
To approve question, and then you're looking for a motion.
Trustee Smith, I make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Smith, second by trustee Frank Muse, trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yep.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell and trustee Tyson absent. Approval of National Night Out, always first?
Looking for a motion.
Trustee Smith, I make the motion.
I'll say.
Motion by trustee Smith, second by trustee Webster, trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Muse?
Yes.
And trustee Tyson and trustee Mitchell is absent. We're gonna strike the IML, that was on there twice. Approval of Salvation Army Calendary, November 1st to December 24th, with the approval, I will be exiting, we're gonna stand in there.
Looking for a motion, for you.
I make the motion.
Trustee Smith, I'll say.
Motion by trustee Frank Muse, second by trustee Smith, trustee Frank Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
And trustee Tyson and trustee Mitchell is absent. Approval of Shore Wireless, he did not come, so we can just strike that. Approval of personal vehicle equipped, the mayor state would be like five thousand to.
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred dollars, and that's for a floor scrub.
Trustee Smith, I make the motion.
I'll say.
Motion by trustee Smith, second by trustee Webster, trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson and trustee Mitchell is absent. We're gonna clean up, we're gonna do all three of these together, approval Dixmoor Phase 2 pump station upgrade, approval Dixmoor 0.5 MG ground storage reservoir rehabilitation, approval Dixmoor 0.75 MG elevator storage tank design, approval Dixmoor village-wide water meter replacement project, approval Dixmoor water valve and fire hydrant replacement project, approval Dixmoor Spalding Avenue water main replacement project, Robie Avenue to Dixie Highway, approval Dixmoor Robie Avenue water main replacement, 147 Street to 140 Burris Street.
Trustee.
There's no objection, there's no objection taken on that.
No, trustee Smith make the motion.
I'll say.
Motion by trustee Smith, second by trustee Webster.
Take, take the vote later.
Trustee Smith was motion, trustee Webster was second, trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Muse?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson and trustee Mitchell is absent.
Let it do a short.
Yeah, we're like. Stand right here. Stand on there. So, um, yeah, what the mayor, or what you all just approved is the design engineering services for the ten million dollar grants for the, uh, the ten million dollar EPA grant for the village of Dixmoor's, uh, water distribution system and water main rehabilitation program. Um, this is going to be seven projects that will be started immediately. Now, the design engineering services agreement has been passed. It's going to include Phase 2 pump station upgrades, rehabilitation of the existing ground storage reservoir, a new, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand gallon elevated tank, village-wide meter replacements, uh, water valve and fire hydrant replacements, forty-five hundred feet of new twelve-inch main from Spalding Avenue, around Spalding Avenue from, uh, Robie to Dixie Highway, and two thousand two hundred fifteen new, uh, twelve-inch main on Robie Avenue from Sibley to the pump station. Um, we anticipate starting immediately, and, uh, construction will be starting on these projects, um, beginning of the construction season next year, probably continuing throughout 2024.
Alright.
Yeah!
Next on the agenda is approval of ordinance increasing vehicles sticker fees and fines for the village of Dixmoor County of Cook, State of Illinois.
Trustee Smith, I make the motion.
I'll say.
Motion by Smith, second by Webster, trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson and trustee Mitchell is absent. Also approval of ordinance authorized conveyance and disposition of certain real property located within a redeveloped project area for the village of Dixmoor County, Cook, State of Illinois.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk, this is the sale of property to Mr. Givens. Mr. Givens made a presentation about that, uh, this, I believe in May, May of this year. Um, it is for three, or one, two, three, four parcel identification numbers. There will be earnest money, uh, provided, it is a cash deal. It is property that's still in an active TIF district. Um, that has been posted, uh, and other offers have been sought in accordance with the TIF. Uh, we have evidence that in at least the last ten years, no one's sought to acquire it, and the village has been paying money to, um, maintain it, and inherently has the risk in case someone gets hurt on it, if it's transferred over. The real estate taxes, there are no real estate taxes on it, because you necessarily own property, they would be prorated at a hundred and five percent. Um, it is in a standard form contract, which I would ask the motion to allow for attorney review period to finalize that contract within five days after approval, which will then be circulated back to the board. Um, Mr. Givens has a closing date, and this has been going on for some time, of July the 14th, 2023, and I'm sure Mr. Givens would be okay if we extended that out to September the 14th, 2023, based upon the date of the exit of the passage of the contract, if that's okay.
No, I, I've got money placed in here, money don't stay there, it's a thing.
And that's no later than September 14th, 2023?
I'd like to see what you can, but I intend to start this immediately.
Right, but to close, what we're saying, the far out date for a closing date, would you be acceptable with September the 14th, 2023? Or earlier if agreed to by the parties in writing? Okay, so we'll have a closing date on or prior to, as agreed to in writing, of September the 14th of 2023. Right now, it's in July 14th, I have a copy of the contract, does anybody want to look at it? Sure. Okay. And we can hold this over to closed session, too?
It's great.
Okay. So we're gonna change this over to closed session.
Can we do that by motion, then?
It's our.
Motion.
Motion, second. Trustee. Motion, second.
Oh, I'm, I make the motion.
Yeah, for close.
Okay.
Trustee Smith, I second.
Motion by trustee Muse, second by. Trustee Muse?
Yes.
Second by trustee, no, look, second by trustee. Smith, you're carrying this over to closed session? Trustee Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden? Trustee Webster? And trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Yes.
Approval of ordinance amended section 111 of, 1-11 of the Colorado Ordinance Village of Dixmoor, Illinois, concerning the settlement of fines, we had motion and second.
Trustee Smith, I made the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Smith, second by trustee Frank Muse, trustee Frank Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
And trustee Webster?
Yes.
And trustee Mitchell is absent. This was tabled. Approval of ordinance increasing insurance requirements for vicious dog and lay fees for dog license in the village of Dixmoor County of Cook, State of Illinois.
Trustee Smith, I make that motion.
I'll say.
Motion by trustee Smith, second by trustee Webster. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Frank Muse?
Yes.
And trustee Mitchell is absent. Mayor, we need to go back on the record, I guess, uh, Mr. Thompson wanted to add something on, can he give it to you right? You said, can't, yeah, can't, okay. Next, we're gonna ask for citizen comments, two minutes, please. Any citizens comment, want to speak before going to closed session?
Hello, everyone, my name is Alida Evans, and I'd just like to thank our neighbors and our customers for coming out to our new, to our event, um, our event, and also, I would love for you all to come to our baseball game. You don't, you all know how we appreciate you all coming to our event. And, um, and the reason why it seems like we're having so many events, because we are trying to stay relevant, but we're trying to stay relevant until you, until you all decide to, uh, allow us to build a library in the village of Dixmoor. Uh, you all are allowing other vendors, other people to build or to open other businesses, and, and I would like for you all to reconsider opening, uh, building a library. So I would like to be put on the next agenda, and I would like to ask every, uh, every trustee to give me a reason why they keep voting no for us to have a library.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to say something, comment?
I hope all of you know.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I just would like to thank the board and the mayor for working together for this money for infrastructure. I'm a resident of Dixmoor, and water has been a little cuckoo, we was out of water, but everybody stuck it out for, what, fifteen days, and I was finally getting money, and so, congratulations.
One thing y'all would like to say?
Yes.
The mayor speak?
Yes.
So, uh, one thing I would like to say, uh, right in front of you, you have, uh, the actual water mains that's being replaced. They're being, is upgraded, it will no longer be, um, the metal piping. Uh, you have PVC that is gonna be much better, it will not be freezing on you. Village of Dixmoor been in need for this for over a hundred and twenty-five years, or as long as we've been in existence, and they're moving forward, the line going north, they are pretty much through land that line system already. And again, I would like to thank, uh, from the federal, state, county, I think everyone that was a part of this, making this project move forward. I would also like to call a couple names, or three or four names, and I still mean everybody. Uh, Robin Kelly, uh, uh, my commissioner, she was here, but she wasn't in place. But Tony Prepwinkle, very, uh, strong person, at the time he had Commissioner Sims here. I'd like to thank Will Davis, uh, and a host of others that made this move forward, including, uh, President Biden. I'd like to thank him for, uh, sending money down. This is not, the end is just the beginning of a project that should have taken place maybe fifty to seventy years ago. I would like to also thank number one, which is God, for allowing this project to move forward. To my trustees, and the other elected officials and employees that work in the village of Dixmoor, as well as the residents. My, uh, elected officials, these trustees have really been working hard with it, and helping us make it through. Uh, my clerk, my assistant, they've been working hard, no rest, because she on the phone with me all the time, talking to me. But, uh, nevertheless, everyone has done a great job in Dixmoor, uh, residents. One of my, uh, employees that used to be here with the village of Dixmoor, Mr. Muse. Me and Mr. Muse, uh, been working, been talking about certain things here in the village and getting it moving for years. So now, uh, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Muse, I applaud you. Yeah, really helped to keep me on track and move forward, and what we need to do. I appreciate you, also behind me, uh, the attorney, Mr. Vasselli, he's been doing a great job, directly in town. Uh, Ms. Melanie, stand up. I really appreciate Ms. Melanie and all that she have been doing for this village, uh, out in the trenches. She don't look like she's been in the trenches, but she's been out here, she's doing her genes, and she's right there with us. Uh, Mr. John Thompson, been doing a great job, so, uh, he's just been moving. Mr. McCain here, he's been doing a great job, letting us know about the hydrants, which hydrants need to be replaced. And Mr. Butler, he's just sitting there fighting all the time for whatever. Whatever the cause is, thank you for that, and also your prayers, as well as your prayers also achieved. So we have a great team here. Uh, one of the other individuals, she ain't gonna call her name, this is Loretta.
So that's your girl?
Get that front office straight, make the shit of it, we paid it. Not only would you be getting good fresh water, but we gonna make sure the bill get paid. So, but anyway, this pipe here, again, this pipe you have before you, it ran from a six inch, it's gonna be a twelve inch. And, uh, it's nothing but a blessing from God. I thank him for showing the village of Dixmoor favor. Uh, and I thank my wife for allowing me to accept phone calls and run around like I do. But anyway, uh, I thank everyone that's involved, it's, uh, couldn't be nothing no better. Uh, we'll be signing papers, uh, that was voted on for Robinson Engineering, so we can get this project up and running, and, uh, get it moving, so I will be signing papers tonight on it, so we can all move forward and taking care of residents in this lovely village of Dixmoor. And everyone you know, tell them, if the mayor catch you throwing a napkin out the window, it's seven hundred fifty dollars. Not playing with that, that's very serious, it goes for you too, brother. If you get caught throwing a napkin or paper bag out the window, you will be fined, so do not come back to the mayor talking about, can you help me with this ticket? Because I might increase the fine if I can't. Just don't do it, help us keep the town clean, we moving forward. We got water coming in, uh, they gonna bless us, uh, MWRD, I'm gonna go talk to, uh, President Steele, where she can help us get the sewer part going. Because these pipes is over in the road, we got sewers falling in too. So I need everybody to chime in, I'm praying that you guys will help us get this going, and thank you all for listening to what I hear you say.
Looking for a motion and a second to go into executive session to speak about employment, litigation, real estate, and labor issues.
Trustee Smith, I'll say.
Motion was by trustee Muse, and second by which one? Trustee Webster? Trustee Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson? Trustee Mitchell? Trustee McFadden? Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And the time executive session is 6:42 PM.
Hold on, hold on.
Make the motion to go back into the whole session.
All right. Who made the motion, motion by trustee Smith, second by who? Uh, what? Second by trustee Frank Muse? Open session, and what time is that?
Oh, no.
Okay, go ahead. Attorney wants to speak.
Yeah, so we went into closed session about, uh, hiring, where's the police chief? Um, what are we gonna do to free officers?
And that's something, we, we, uh, we discussed that with HR, I mean, I mean, if y'all, if y'all want to vote for a troop, you do that, then I sit down and discuss with HR and the chief. One of the guys is already, we had already put in school for that. But the other two, uh, guys need to, uh, you know, we'll see what HR say in chief, and sit down.
I like that. Pending approval.
Do that, HR.
Do, do that.
So you made the most pending HR, so whatever HR.
Then I'll let you all know what's more.
Who made the most pending HR?
I'm making the motion.
I was by trustee Muse, second by trustee, uh, second by trustee Smith, pending HR, all three, you said all three?
All three.
Trustee Muse?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell? Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson is absent, you have four yea, one absent, and one absent.
Next. We came in for litigation, or for real estate, and I don't think there was a consensus made, there was a, we don't need to take action on it, we're just not moving on it, we don't need to take action on it, we don't know what's right, we just, we pass on it, and then we were in here for litigation, and we are coming back. and we are coming back on October, or sorry? Wow, I apologize, on August the ninth at one P M.
Okay.
You ain't what we talking about, you ain't what we saying that now. Yeah, that's our record.
August ninth, one P M.
Don't get it. Okay, uh, so I guess, like, we finish it.
We can't discuss that one.
No, I'm gonna discuss some what we had.
You can't even tell them what was in there.
No, that's, I wanna.
Okay, motion to.
Trustee Smith makes the motion to the job.
No. Trustee Smith, second by?
Yes, I'll second.
Second by Mew, trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Mew?
Yes.
Trustee McFadden?
Yes.
Trustee Webster?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
And trustee Tyson is absent, and the time is seven fifty P M.